Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Art Whitman. I'm Chair of the Shafter Select Board. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Shafter Select Board on Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023, at 6:00 PM. First order of business, is there anything on the agenda that members of the board have a conflict of interest in?
No.
Nope.
No. We don't have any minutes to approve at this one. There's just the one from our last meeting. Next on the agenda is warrants. Probably the first one we'd better sign is, or I signed it because we didn't know who was to be made out to and everything else, but this is for $89,951.75 for property next door. So, we own it. The building has been secured and it has been boarded up. It's been cleaned out, but it's, you shouldn't be in there. So, it's been boarded up because it's got holes in the floor and things like that. Probably comes springtime, there will mull around it, clean up around it, and there is a lean-to on the back that's gotta come down. But the rest of the building is solid and will probably sit there for a while. So, I signed it so we can get...
Art, before you do that, did I include $20 for transaction fee?
Yep. Wire transaction.
Yeah, that should be corrected because for some reason they did not charge me for that. So, you can correct this week. $3 left, I think it was $20. Is that correct?
Yeah, $20.
Yeah. So, just the actual amount was the total.
So, I subtract $20 from the total?
Yep.
And just to be fresh for everybody too, this is ARPA fund money.
Yep.
Used to create a new center over here for the community.
So, the right number is $89,931.75, okay? The next one is payroll, not payroll, check warrant, number 22, for a total of $58,270.95. Items over $1,000 are, first of all, and...
Hey, make a motion.
Motion of Mike.
Second.
Second by Martha. Items over $1,000 are A&amp;K Agro Services for $1,649 for hauling the gravel, Appalachia Salt, $29.51, Bennington County Sheriff's, $2,366, GA Bow for fuel, $1,548, Bow again for $1,929, and again for $2,476. Sullivan, is that for our...
Let's see, the last payment with a legal issue with North Bennington.
Okay. $2,625.
$29,733.
Oh, yes, I dropped along the line. $29,733, and Sycamore Landscaping, $2625. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, Carrie, 400. So, for announcements, we're still looking for people to join the Economic Development Committee. This is a major committee that has a lot of work that can be done to do in the future. We haven't had one in several years, but we've got some really good ideas now. We've got the land next door that we can work with and that sort of stuff. This is a committee that can go on for several years. We also need a coal haul committee, and this is, will be just for a period of time that we decide what to do with coal haul and that sort of stuff. So, we desperately need some input from the public on this, okay? So, get ahold of Dave or any one of us, and we'll be glad to submit your name and so on and so forth, okay? Public comments? If you're here to do about the solar project that's coming up next, but is there any other person that has any public comments or anything other than that? Okay. Treasurers' report.
Hello, everybody. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Yep.
Could you bring up December cash flow first, please?
December?
That's, that one.
There we go.
Let's see, anything interesting here? You see a large delinquent tax collection came in. We expect those to be pretty large this time of year. That's the low-hanging fruit. I've got another check that needs to go in the bank, but Merit's been working very hard on making those collections. Look down at that second to last line there. The interest continues higher than I expected it to be. I actually asked them about that, and she says, "Yeah, interest went up." It didn't go up by an order of magnitude, so I still expect them to discover that there's something wrong, and my conscience is clear. So, that's what it is for now.
That's a big number.
Last year at this time, it was $110. Can we go down to the expenses there? This is the bag service charge. They are still charging me zero because of the nightmares of the transfer. That will be not only appearing in subsequent months, but probably quite a bit higher than it has been. You can't really bargain with them, at least not until you have a relationship established. So, I think that's the last time you'll see zero there. If we could go down, okay, this, I wanted to take a look at the budget status. It looks like we're spending money slower than last year. You see the 44.8% versus last year, 55.5. That kinda got my attention, and then I realized that I had forgotten to do the voter-approved transfers to reserves, which usually we do the week between Christmas and New Year, and it just slipped off my to-do list somehow. So, I did do that today, and I gave Dave the new cash flow showing that. So, our cash balance right now is inflated because that transfer had not happened. So, if we could look at the, yeah, you're gonna see a whole lot of zeros, and then there, oops, a little bit up. So, there's the transferred reserves, that 388, 400, and then that's a more realistic look at our cash as it stands today. That is a little lower than I expected it to be this time of year, so I need to look at the due-to, due-froms. I think that there's probably some money that was spent actually out of the reserve account that needs to be transferred back to the general fund. So, I will do that before the next meeting, and then we'll have a better sense of where our cash is for right now. Any questions about any of that?
Yeah, on the, you said that the voters approve line items on, or they approve the budget, and then there are line items that go to reserves, and you actually put that in there.
It's a big cash transfer from one account to the other.
But it's just on paper.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yep.
But it's, yeah, it just means that the money is sitting elsewhere, but it's in the right place now. We always wait until December just to let things calm down after tax collection is done. So, anyway, so that's a realistic look at our cash position right now. If you wanna pull up the reserves, so that's the reserves for January. Mostly, the only thing that's going on is you see a lot of water in and a lot of water out. That's the payment, the $31,000 there at the 260 line. That's the payment to North Bennington, and the 111 is the, well, a lot of it is just what we took in from water receipts for the month. Little tiny bit of ARPA funding down there at the bottom, $241. Did we just, just what that is?
Well, yeah, it was in the paper.
It was a special gift.
It's kinda sad, actually. A couple of towns just didn't get their act together, and they didn't get their ARPA money, so they chopped it up and gave it to all of us.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
I feel so bad. I mean, I would happily give them back their share from us, but it just doesn't work that way. So, that's why we got an extra rounding errors worth of ARPA funding. That sidewalk is a grant that came in, right?
Yeah, sidewalk is, well, $6,000 for this year because we have an ongoing project, and the sidewalk's coming to study down at Grant Street. And then we also have, we wanted to keep the money in there, put more in this year because we have repairs to be done on the sidewalks around here, because we have to start building that up again because concrete is very expensive.
Also, on that ARPA line at 900, you see that's the warrant you just signed for the purchase of the property, the abutting property. If we could just take a quick look at the January, yep, so there you see in the credits line, that's all of the money that we transferred over the voter-approved transfers. So, that's the other side of what we saw in the cash flow. So, that's what I've been up to. Any questions about any of that?
I didn't, but I had a question about the audit that got sent around that I know always happens, and they had some recommendations. Is that gonna have any changes? I know they recommended a bunch of things that potentially would happen.
Well, some of that is sort of boilerplate that, like, they asked for us to, one of their big concerns is they don't like the way we handle cash at the transfer station. They want receipts for every $2, and it's not really feasible right now.
Yeah.
Another thing is they keep talking about an asset program that's basically valuing all of the roads in the town, and it wouldn't even really get us into compliance with the kind of...
With what they're asking for, okay.
So, those are the two big ones. One thing that I requested them, that we have a total fraud audit within the building and outside of it. That's supposed to happen in January, well, we're in January, very soon.
Okay.
We haven't scheduled it yet. Those were the big ones that I...
Yeah, and that's kind of what I was curious about, if there was kind of remedies to some of those.
Yeah, so that's one we're following through with.
Okay.
Yeah, but some of that is just language that appears every year.
Got it. I thought some of it was.
We're working on a cash basis, and yet they wanna...
Yeah, I can imagine some of those things being done.
Some of it we've done too, so many times with them, and, you know, a lot of the things like the asset management, which we have our assets recorded, but to meet this Gatsby 42 standard or whatever it is, it's simply impractical that we talked about changing our method of accounting, and we said, "Would that make us compliant?" No. So, it's like, well, then why should we change the whole system?
Yeah, there's just no...
Because we'd have to do so many things. Many, many towns with our limited resources don't...
Right.
...meet these standards that every town in the country's allegedly supposed to meet.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the solar project off Holy Smoke Road. We have Jeff Nelson here, who is going to give us a 10 or 15-minute briefing on what it is and that sort of stuff. Before I ask him to do that, I just kinda wanted to comment about, we received probably the same thing you did just a few days ago. The state of Vermont has said that we can't have any zoning bylaws that impact solar projects. Our town plan says we, what's the word, welcome it?
Yeah, encourage, well, encourage, welcome.
So, it's in our town plan to have, to encourage things like renewable energy and...
And we have several that we have successfully accomplished over several years, probably the last five or six.
But this Select Board is not a decision-maker in any of it. We're acting as a conduit just to get you together along with the people who are doing it. We have no thing. So, when you address, you know, you can address us, but really, you're addressing Mr. Nelson. But I just ask that if you come up, you at least sit here so they can pick you up and just be recognized by myself, because Mr. Nelson probably can't see everybody. So, yeah, why don't we listen to what he has to say first, and then ask questions and all that sort of stuff? I think he'll explain that this is just the start of a very long process, but I'll let him. So, Jeff, are you there?
Great. Yes, damn, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for that introduction, and yes, my name's Jeff Nelson. I'm with DHB, and DHB is a regional engineering firm with, from on offices in South Birmingham, Rutland, and Montpelier. And with me tonight is Reed Wills, who, with Sun East and Freepoint Solar. And we very much appreciate the Select Board and members of the community giving us the opportunity to introduce the project, and I emphasize the word "introduce." And, you know, as the Chair just noted, this is the beginning of the process, and we have already done considerable outreach, but we have a lot more outreach that we are planning to do with individual landowners and other interested individuals to basically present the project, answer questions, potentially tweak the project as appropriate to address concerns. So, the 45-day notice is something that we're required to do for the Public Utility Commission. It basically provides an initial introduction to the fact that a project is intended to be proposed, but then beyond that, we have quite a lot of additional work to do in terms of studies and plans to be able to fully present the information. And some of the work that VHB is responsible for as a team member here is the site civil design, all of the stormwater and erosion control design, the natural resource assessments and minimizing impacts, avoiding impacts to things like wetlands and natural communities, the aesthetics analysis and aesthetics mitigation, and the sound study and sound mitigation. So, there's a whole bunch of different pieces that are now in the works that will be reported on and that we'll be able to have conversations with abutting landowners and others that are interested to explain and to be able to just kind of make sure that any questions or concerns that people have about the project are addressed to the best of our ability so that we can move the project forward in a collaborative way. So, with that, I'd like to give Reed the opportunity to say hello and introduce himself, and then, David, I was hoping that I could share my screen and take the site plan that was a part of the 45-day notice and be able to just do kind of a quick walkthrough of some of the key elements of the plan, if that would be okay.
Yep, that's no problem.
Okay. Reed, do you wanna say hello?
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Thanks, as Jeff said, thanks for letting us, you know, join the meeting tonight. You know, reiterating what Jeff said, you know, we're here to begin a process of working with this community and with the state, the state agencies, in order to make sure that the project we are proposing, you know, makes sense and is done the right way. We've been working on one of the two owners of Sun East Development, who has, you know, dozens of projects in development throughout the Northeast, been in business for about eight years now, and we've been teamed with Freepoint Solar out of Stanford, Connecticut, and have been working with them since 2016. We are, you know, have a number of things that we like to do on our projects, some of which are required and are typical, and some of which are a little unusual, but, you know, first and foremost, we're a new project, where financially, we've got a lot of resources. We're opposed to deconditioning bond. This is in our mind, and I know you gotta take the long view to appreciate this, is temporary use of property. So, just to provide assurances that when this is all said and done, all of the equipment will be removed and the property will go back to its current condition. That's something that, you know, not every town requires or every state requires. I'm pretty sure it's standard procedure here in Vermont, but that's something we always start with and ask, you know, people to think about. We will always and are committed to doing native ground covers and using native plants as part of all of the, you know, state work that we're gonna be doing and landscaping work. And we spend, you know, quite a lot of time in our experience, it may be different in this project, but in our experience, people generally, you know, have not had close proximity to a solar project. They wanna make sure their health and safety is chosen and addressed. They wanna know about noise, and they wanna know that it's not materially impacting on a visual standpoint. And we think we can achieve all of those things here. And we've got, you know, put a team together, I don't know if people have read with VHB, they're one of the preeminent environmental groups in the Northeast, and we've got a ton of work in Vermont, Jeff in particular, he's worked on a lot of stuff, and some of his colleagues. So, we're trying to really put a good team together. I know people have wondered, well, you know, why have we heard about this earlier? You know, frankly, it's taken us about 18 months to get all the studies necessary just to begin this process. Vermont's quite extensive in terms of the data that they require to start the process. So, what we wanna do is when we start the process, we start interacting, especially with our, you know, neighbors and people in the community, is we wanna have a good site plan, we want them to be able to answer your question. If we begin the outreach too early, then we're giving you, you know, very conceptual responses, and we really try and be better than that. So, that's the reason for the timing. Some folks, I understand, through great fine, are a bit concerned that, you know, what we put out, put out right before the holidays, we're trying to sneak something through. It's called a 45-day notice for a reason. The beginning of the process began in late December, but, you know, all of January, we're dedicated, and we have an outreach team, and we are dedicated to meeting with folks and hearing, you know, what's important, you know, to folks in the area. And we have provided in our 45-day notice an email address and a phone number with my colleague, Marsha Ha, is standing by. She does a lot of community work for us, and, you know, welcomes your input. So, thank you again for the opportunity. This is something that, you know, we do a lot, and we wanna do it well, and we wanna be a good day.
Thanks, Reed. So, I think, David, I'll try to share my screen, and then I'm just gonna ask, I think I have to let, you have to give me permission...
Yeah.
...so that I can do that.
Looking for where that is again. Haven't given anyone permission in a while.
Let's see, it says host disabled.
I think you were down where, down near share screen, if you go into advanced sharing options, I think you can...
You know, one participant at a time. You can share, okay.
I think you can do that for the moment, it's easier.
Okay, go ahead. Can you share now, Jeff?
Yep, I got it. So, let's see, I'll do this, and, okay, so let me know when you can see something.
You have it?
Yep.
You got it?
Yep.
Okay. So, this drawing, there are two drawings included in the 45-day letter. This one is on page seven of the PDF, and it includes the little inset map to the left that shows the site location in relation to US-7 going up to Wood Manchester, and so the red squares is the apartment location of the site. And then the main area of the proposed array is located with the, where you can see all these black lines on the lands of Kennedy that Sun East and Freepoint will be acquiring. And I'm gonna just go down one page because this one has US-7 to the right, and north is up on the screen, but if I go down one more page, it's a slightly larger view. This is the same plan, it's just turned 90 degrees, and so basically, this, oops, this shows several things on this plan that I wanna highlight. First of all, as you can see with the color photography underneath, most of the proposed array is located within lands already cleared. There is some tree cutting that's involved, we've tried to minimize that in consultation with the Agency of Natural Resources, but we're really trying to maximize the amount of the array that's within cleared lands to avoid having to cut additional trees as much as possible. The array would have a fence around it for safety reasons, and other than that, there's not going to be a lot of grading. In other words, the site topography will be left largely as-is. There'll be some tree clearing, as I noted. There'll be some drives around the array to access certain areas of the panels. The, one of the important features of this site is that there's an existing electric transmission line that's down in the bottom of this drawing. This is a line that's operated by Green Mountain Power. We call it the 46 KV line, and that is very important because that means that there will not have to be any off-site electrical upgrades. So, we don't have to put out new power lines, we don't have to clear land to get the electricity generated from the project off-site. It would tie into the grid right on the property itself. The actual electrical interconnect equipment will be located in this area, sort of out behind where the Kennedys have an existing barn, and we've tried to basically keep that in an area where it would be largely surrounded by trees to provide, number one, screening and, number two, sound mitigation. And then, another really important feature of site is that we are proposing a temporary access drive 24 feet wide off of the limited access section of US-7. And the purpose of that is to be able to bring all this material in, the panels, the posts, the fencing, concrete, et cetera, without having to drive all of that through Shafter and on local roads. This is our preferred option because it would be far more efficient for project construction, and it would be less disruptive to the community than having to bring all this stuff in on local roads. We've had several discussions with the Agency of Transportation about this... We've had several discussions with the Agency of Transportation about this, and we've submitted a proposal to them to allow for this temporary break in the limited access right-of-way. We don't have any indication yet whether they're going to approve it, but we're very hopeful that they will, and that that will be something that we see as a really positive aspect of minimizing any impact to the community during construction. One more feature I just want to point out on the site plan are these blue areas, the stippling, and what these represent are areas where we are proposing to do additional landscape screening. So, basically, along Holy Smoke Road, on both the north-south oriented section and then the east-west section, there'll be additional landscape screening, so a mix of deciduous and coniferous plantings to better screen the site, which is actually quite well-screened already, but we felt that this was a way to even further minimize visibility. And then over by US-7, again, presuming we have the temporary access that would go away once the project is constructed, and we would fill in that little hole over there to further screen that area. So, those are the high points of the site plan, and as Reed mentioned, you know, we wanted to wait to do outreach to budding landowners and to others until we had something real, something realistic to share that shows you what we're actually proposing to build. You know, we've had some concept sketches and things about, you know, what this might look like, but really not until December did we have the actual layout of the array and the panels to be able to then put into the forty-five day notice and to be able to share and discuss with the community. So, you know, so that's the timing. And as we've said, this is the first step for us to, you know, talk with folks and to explain folks. We'll have detailed viewshed analysis to show, you know, well, what will I see from my house? What will I see from this road? That's all work that's being done now, and that will go into, number one, these conversations with everyone, as well as the petition that will get filed with the Public Utility Commission later on this year. So, with that, I guess, Reed, I don't know if there's anything that I missed or that you want to highlight in terms of the site plan and the overall project?
The only other thing I would mention is, in total, there's about eighty-five acres that are being impacted, and we are in the midst of acquiring this property. The total property is about one hundred and eighty-seven, so we're using, you know, less than half the acreage. So, while there is, you know, some impact with some trees coming down, there's quite a lot of land that's going to be, you know, maintained in its current condition, and for the most part, that provides, you know, a pretty significant buffer both on the US-7 side and into our west. And, you know, basically, the area that we try to be sensitive to is the northern area where there's a few houses up that way, which is why we proposed the additional landscaping. As Jeff mentioned, there's pretty good deciduous cover that's up there, but there's not as good, you know, winter leaf-down type cover, and we can improve on that with the addition of some evergreen treatments as well. So, that is something we wanted to know. The technology we're using is a fixed tilt technology, so even though they're not, they don't really create very much noise, panels are not moving. And so that's, you know, just another consideration. I think this is going to be a very quiet neighbor, especially given that we're right through, so.
Can I ask a question, or are we not able to do that?
No, not yet.
Okay.
There is going to, we'll certainly have plenty of time.
Oh, okay. I just didn't know if that was allowed to be fixed, or.
So, all right, this is Jeff. So, that's really, you know, again, I want to be respectful of time, but, you know, that's really what we wanted to do in terms of an initial presentation of the project. We are, you know, absolutely willing and planning to set up follow-up meetings, whether that's with one-on-one with individual landowners or with, you know, a group of folks. We want to do that, and, you know, this is, as I said, just the beginning of the process. So, I don't know if there are specific questions that the Select Board has for us at this point that you'd like to pose, but otherwise, I'll turn it back over to you to let others that are there that may want to ask us something, do so.
I think I'll let other people talk first, and then I'll wind up with what the Select Board has kind of decided on, okay? So, who was the first person that, was it?
I think it was Andrea.
Yes, go ahead, Andrea.
Is that okay?
Go ahead, Andrea.
Thank you so much. Thanks. Jeff and Reed, thank you so much. This is wonderful. And thank you to the Select Board for having this, you know, having Jeff and Reed present this evening to the public. That's really great. I'm really excited about the project myself, and I guess one thing, I don't know, maybe Jeff and Reed, you may have touched on this, and it just went over my head when I was listening just now. Would there be a way to, I mean, I understand how wonderful solar is, but I think maybe just like reiterating, what are the benefits for this project coming in? And if you did speak about that, I'm so sorry. Maybe my head was somewhere else. Do you mind just speaking a little bit more to what do you feel the benefits are to Shaftesbury and just in general the region with this project, so that people understand and like that?
Thanks, Andrea. Reed, do you want to kick that off, and then I can try?
Yeah.
Andrea Baki.
Andrea Baki.
And who is she?
Can we stop sharing the screen, Jeff?
Just so you know, this is not restricted to people on the screen. Anyone entirely ask questions.
I'll stop.
Just so that we can see people's faces. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, and I'm Andrea Baki, and I am a Shaftesbury resident, and I think someone was wondering who I was. So, yes, Andrea Baki, Shaftesbury resident.
Thanks, thanks for your questions and comments, Andrea. So, you know, I've been in the energy industry. I started in the late eighties, got involved because, you know, I studied environmental impacts in college and felt energy is, you know, the biggest lever that we have in our society. So, you know, started out doing combined heat power and working on new gas facilities. Then the last ten years, been working in the solar field, and it's really been rewarding. The technology's always been a great technology, and that is so quiet, it is distributed, it is low impact, but it hasn't really been cost competitive until about the last six or seven years. And the last six or seven years, it's really broken through, as, you know, happens with so many technologies. It takes a little while, and people have to pay a premium for it to stay competitive and run it, and then it comes through. So, you know, what are the benefits that solar bring? Basically, every hour that our project is generating solar electricity, a less efficient fossil fuel plant is not running. And while there's, you know, typically a perception of solar as being, you know, a smaller project than what we're doing, ours is still relatively small on a nationwide basis. We understand it's big and a big impact. There's only been one of this size that's come in through Vermont, so we have to work especially hard to make sure people know we're managing those impacts. But the good news is it's going to do a lot to offset fossil fuel emissions, lower greenhouse gases, and, you know, help us in battling, you know, a really big challenge for our, and for our kids and for our grandkids. So, we're very, you know, committed to trying to get this done. We want it right, but we feel like we're bringing, you know, a clean energy resource into the community. We want to do it responsibly, but we think the benefits really hit the community and beyond the community in what we're avoiding with that fossil fuel issue.
So then, I'll just add a few thoughts. In terms of the benefits to Shaftesbury and the state of Vermont, the project will generate considerable new tax revenue for the town in terms of town real estate taxes as well as taxes to the state of Vermont for the education fund. We anticipate, as Reed said, that the project, once it's reached the end of its useful life, will be fully decommissioned and the land restored to agricultural capability. We also anticipate that, you know, once the project is built, it will be very quiet with very few, you know, visits there to, you know, just kind of maintain the system so that it will be, you know, a non-polluting, energy-generating neighbor that will, you know, be pretty invisible in the community. We're also committed to working with the town to develop some kind of a good neighbor-type project. We are excited about the land acquisition next to Cole Hall and the potential community center, and if there's a way we can work with the town to perhaps do a solar charging system for EVs that gets done in concert with that project, we'd love to try to figure out a way to partner with the town on that. So, anyway, those are a few additional thoughts that I wanted to add.
Where does the bulk of the energy that you want to produce go? Does Vermont, you know, solely benefit from that, or does that go somewhere else?
No, we have not sold the electricity yet. We're still, as we said, sort of early in the process and looking for the, you know, authority to build the facility.
Right, but if you do build, I'm sorry, Reed, but if you do build the facility, where is that electricity going to go? Is that going to benefit Vermont, or is it going to go to New York?
We would expect at least a portion of it's going to stay local, but we don't have a commitment to a specific facility.
And you said you purchased over, what was it, one hundred and eighty acres? Was that the amount?
We're in the process of closing one, the two parcels owned by the Kennedys, which is one hundred and eighty-seven acres.
And you're going to use about eighty acres to do your project you're looking to do? So, what do you want to do with the other hundred acres?
You know, we're open to suggestions. So, it's, you know, mostly forested land. We know we have, you know, neighbors on various sides that might have some ideas about how to use it. We are going to fence off the solar project because it is for site safety, and we have to make sure that, you know, we don't create any environment for any harm. But once we do that, you know, we're really open to, you know, if people, you know, we're considering, we haven't been into it, we're considering conservation easement on that land of some sort in various types of conservation easements that you can do. Or in the alternative, you know, we found in some communities, and people are like, wow, it'd be really great to be able to have a parking trail or a snowmobile trail or something like that. You know, we don't really know what people in the area are, you know, most interested in, and so we're putting that out there as part of this, you know, public notice period is, is let us know, let us know your ideas, because we're buying it for the eighty, the eighty-five acres. The rest of it, we just kind of want to do the right thing. And there's different stakeholders will have a view on that. Some will be local, some will be abutters, and some will be agencies, but we want to, you know, leverage that because it's a great natural resource. Hundred acres of ninety-sporson land.
If you have.
If you wouldn't mind.
Please come up and.
And state your name.
State your name. Be recognized.
Yeah, I'm Kit Auschnit. I live at ten thirty-five Holy Smoke Road, so I don't know where Andrea lives, but I'm right across the street from this project.
Andrea, not Andrea.
Sorry, Andrea. And I guess my, I have a, probably a million questions, but I will try to limit it. My, just in reaction to your statement about the excess land, if you have so much excess land, why are these panels being placed right next to the road? And with maybe a single line of trees between them and the road, why aren't they set back more to make it, I mean, I walk on that road just about every day, and I guess I'm particularly concerned about the visual impact. So, that's one of very many questions about the particular site plan. So, I don't think you need to get into the details of that, but that's something I would like to be addressed.
And I guess I'll just jump in, and then Reed, Mr. Auschnit, thank you for that, and, you know, obviously, you're nearby a butter, and we absolutely want to take the opportunity to sit down with you in person, you know, go through the viewshed analysis as it's being developed, answer the questions that you have, whether it's one or a million, and just try to, you know, look at what's proposed, and, you know, I expect there may be some tweaks we can work through, but we are, you know, at a point where I think it would be really worthwhile to have that conversation.
Okay, sure. So, let's not get into that level of detail here. My other questions, well, one other question pertaining to noise. You talk about noise mitigation, and then you talk about having, what are these, snowmobiles. So, I guess there seems to be a conflict of interest there. But in any event, it's a very quiet area now. I certainly would like it to stay that way, and I think all my neighbors would who are also here. But also, I am a big fan of solar engineer, solar energy. You don't need to preach to me about that. I have solar panels on my house. That's one of the first things I did when I moved here was have them installed, and it's a wonderful technology. However, the big question is, where is it appropriate to put it? And in my book, cutting down a tree to put in a solar panel is, doesn't make any sense. So, I guess that comes down to my philosophy. I also, there's been no mention about the wildlife in the area. There are many sentient beings on this planet other than human, and I'd like to see some attention paid to their well-being. And that's part of living in Vermont, for crying out loud. That's what Vermont is all about. So, my specific questions, which I want to address here, one of which has already been asked, I think, regarding where is the electricity going to go? But my follow-up question to your answer, which was kind of a non-answer, is when is that going to be known, where the electricity is going to go?
And only a portion will be in Vermont, so.
Yeah. So, when does that get determined?
I mean, if we only get a small slice of the pie, and some other state's getting the most of it, then why don't we put that mess in their state?
Exactly.
Yeah, that's right.
Because the same thing has happened in Maine. You know, Massachusetts comes in and says, we need more power. They say, we're going to build a corridor through Maine to bring down hydro power from Canada. And then the Maine people say, well, wait a minute. And they had a referendum and said, no way, even though it was backed by the governor and all the politicians and everybody and even the power company, so.
But this isn't that. We have two gentlemen here trying to talk about the project. I don't know why you're comparing a different project.
Well, I don't know why you're, you seem to be.
Point of order here. Andrea, you need to raise your hand.
I think you can calm down a little bit.
Andrea, please be recognized.
Yeah, I mean, come on.
He's got the floor. Please speak.
So, okay, so I know this is not Maine. I'm just saying that I've experienced a similar or an analogous situation. If the power is not going to Vermont, the question, or a significant amount of it, it seems to me it's a moot point, because why would we be building it here? The second question I have is, will you be selling the renewable energy credits, and will they be sold in-state or out-of-state?
Yeah, somebody had asked about when's the timing of when we'll know, you know, who our customers are. That's going to be known before we go into construction. Typically, the time we do that, we'd be able to give you a more full answer, you know, right? You know, right now, we are, my understanding, at least a year away from being able to go into construction. So there's still some time until that's...
Okay, I mean, fair enough. I'm just saying that those are...
If I can just give just a moment to respond to the comment, you know, just, we would love to sell this into Vermont, but, you know, there's a lot of benefits that do flow into the local area, and you're getting, you know, you're getting clean energy. There are going to be some, you know, benefits that financially could help the community. I agree with you, we want to be respectful of the wildlife, and we've done a tremendous amount of study work that we'll be able to share with you in detail. This is part of the reason why it's taken us so long to be able to get out. And we have the ability to conserve 100 acres out of 187 acres. So we have, and we don't have to put snowmobile trails in. I'm just sharing with you in other communities, that's what, that's what the neighbors were interested in.
Okay.
You want to learn about this, boom. And, you know, I would just ask everybody to, you know, allow us time to get the process moving, and, you know, hopefully, as we proceed through this, we'll be able to answer your questions more fully.
Okay. All I'm saying is, from my perspective, and obviously, I'm not the decision-maker in any of this, those questions will have to be answered in order for a decision to be made. So I would be very disappointed if the state doesn't ask those questions and demand answers. So my final question for the purpose of this meeting is, obviously, this is not your first rodeo. Can you refer us to other projects that you have completed, solar projects, where we can talk to people about their experience, and how, and the outcome, and how the process has gone for them?
Yeah, we just are in the process of finalizing construction of a project that is south Albany, really not too far away from here. That community was very sensitive about aesthetic impact, very sensitive about noise. They were well outside of Albany, so they considered they were on the Hudson. So they considered themselves to be, you know, a rural community, and wanted to keep a lot of their character there. So that's in the town of Hook Sack, New York. And that project was smaller. That was about a 30-acre project, just one, as I said, of the 80, 85. But, you know, we had a very interactive, interactive engagement with the planning board, the town officers, and the community. Many people came out of it very satisfied that we were able to address their concern. So that's a live one. You'll see a lot of landscaping that's been done there, you know, probably above, you know, top quartile for projects in the area, certainly in New York. And I encourage you to go take a look at it.
Okay, great. So you can give us that information. So I'm done. I'll let my cohorts take over.
Thank you, Kit. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Enjoy reading that.
Thank you.
Just one point of order before we go on. For those who are on Zoom, the same rules of decorum apply. Please raise your hand, we recognize, before you start speaking. It's important to have the meeting function properly. Thank you.
Yep. Whoever wants to come next?
Sir, you can.
Good evening. My name is Bob Heen. 907 Holy Smoke Road, which is right next to my neighbor and right across the street from the proposed project. I basically just had one question. You had mentioned that this would be generating new tax revenue for Vermont, and hopefully for the town of Shaftesbury. Can you give us any feeling for what that money might be in terms of a 20-megawatt facility? I mean, you're generating a profit. I don't, I have absolutely no idea how the board is going to address how they intend to tax that property, or... I'm a little confused about, you know, if you came in with a business and the town would tax that business, however. Can you explain to us how a solar panel farm is...
Assessed.
Is assessed? And what kind of monies can we expect for the town of Shaftesbury to see in the future?
So I can start with that, and then Reed, if you want to add, but we've estimated that the annual tax revenue to the town will be approximately $100,000. And we've estimated a similar amount to the state education fund. That formula is fairly straightforward for the state education fund, because obviously a lot of solar projects have been built around Vermont. Obviously, the final numbers will depend on, you know, the final assessment procedure and valuation of the project, but that's, those are the numbers that we have estimated at this stage in the process.
Thank you.
Michael, we'll have you in a minute. Go ahead, I'm talking to Michael.
Bless your name is Michael.
No, it is not. Definitely not.
My name is Dr. Jim Poole. Me and my family have lived at 708 Holy Smoke Road since June 2011. We had rented in Bennington for about three years and found this property, and this is where we settled. You know, we found out about this project on the 23rd of December, and still really trying to wrap our heads around it. So our property, 708, lies directly north of the project. From that schematic, looks like there's going to be, solar panels going about 250 feet from our house. And it's, it's an open field that's been, was corn and then mostly alfalfa for the last, you know, probably five, six, seven years. We totally support solar. We actually tried to get solar panels, and the assessment of where we were, the efficiency wouldn't have been worth it. And this was probably, you know, six, seven years ago. I'm not sure the efficiency of the equipment now. You know, our biggest concern, you know, surely what my other neighbors have voiced, you know, Holy Smoke Road is a great road. It's quiet. It's rural. There's, you know, beautiful fields. You know, all of Mr. Kennedy's land, he was nice enough to let us use that, and we cut trails up there. So my three kids grew up hiking and skiing and snowshoeing in that land, and it's just, it's really beautiful land. So surely, that's, you know, that's the obvious concern. You know, the real concern we have is that one field right above us. It's a hill facing north, and I'm not sure how a row of trees is going to mitigate the view. You know, our property is, you know, what really makes, you know, the view really what makes our property. You know, that field, you know, we have our deck right outside, and that's where we have coffee in the morning in the summer, and we look up into that field, and there's deer, and there's, and there's bear, and there's, you know, turkeys, lots of turkeys. So, you know, that, you know, one of the major reasons we moved to Shaftesbury is that threat right now, and that's really concerning to us. The other thing with that field is just the water runoff is a huge issue. The farmers that were, you know, working those fields were nice enough to help us try to mitigate it. When they initially had corn, you know, it basically washed our barn out. They didn't plant the whole field, you know, to help kind of give a buffer. When they switched alfalfa, that was, that was a little bit better. You know, they helped us kind of manage, showed me where to kind of build a berm to try to get the water...
To berm the water.
Yeah, to try to direct it away from where our barn is, our barn is half unusable because of that water that comes down. It's really wet back there. So that's just a major concern that I have, is the, is just the water runoff from that hill. And, you know, and the view, you know, the view's, you know, I'm not sure how, you know, it's a pretty steep hill, you know, and, you know, if you put 70-foot trees in there to try to prevent us from seeing it, you know, so that one field is a major issue for us in the project, you know, of course, it's concerning. Again, we're still trying to wrap our heads around this, you know, to have 100, you know, 190 acres, 80 of it being an industrial site now, is just really concerning to us. And we didn't move to Shaftesbury for that, understanding that, you know, solar is important, and, you know, we need to find somewhere to put it. You know, I kind of echo what Kit said, you know, if there's, if there's 100 acres they're not using, why does it have to start 250 feet from our house? That's really, really worrying to us. So thank you for that presentation. That was helpful. This has all been kind of really, you know, it's kind of, you know, kind of spun us a little bit, you know, that we weren't, had no idea this was going on, and, you know, all of a sudden, we get maps, and there's a huge industrial block going in next door. So definitely concerning. So that's what I have to say.
Sure, being a butter, that they will be in touch with you.
Definitely, yeah. We've been in touch. My wife spoke with, I think, probably someone in the company down in Texas. You know, that, you know, you know, it was a good presentation. We appreciate it, and, you know, hopefully, we could get it to the point where it'll be something that works for everybody.
Yep.
You know, I don't know. Hopefully.
Thank you. That's, yep, sorry. Appreciate that. And, you know, obviously, that's really helpful information, particularly in terms of the water runoff. And, you know, I, obviously, we want to, you know, make sure that the aesthetic analysis makes sense to you, and that if there are tweaks that we need to make in terms of where the array is placed, that is certainly something we want to have a conversation about, because this is, this is not the final design. This is, for what you forgot to note, it is a layout that we've been able to develop, but there is, you know, obviously, opportunity to tweak that and make sure that, you know, to the maximums and impossible, folks can be comfortable with what's proposed.
Yeah. I mean, there's a lot of remote land, you know, back there, and, you know, to not be using 100 acres, and then, again, 250 feet from our house, it just, it seems like there might be a better way to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess one thing I will say is that, you know, part of our work with the Agency of Natural Resources and the studies we've done, you know, is to look at ways to minimize impacts to wildlife, and, you know, look at avoid clearing forest blocks. And so, you know, we're trying to find that balance between maximizing the use of the open land, but also not resulting in other impacts to people like you and other abutters, you know, so that, you know, that's, it's part of the kind of the whole design process that we're working through now. But, you know, maybe there's a way, you know, to do some more tree cutting further to the south and some of the other areas, and avoid being so close. So that's, that's the conversation we want to have.
And I know that land, just being back in that land all the time, you know, around where the old quarry is, you know, all that rubble, there's, there's all sorts of dens, there's foxes, there's bear, you know, you know, we have, there's a ton of wildlife in that area that I think, you know, you put a big fence around it, you know, where are they going to go? You know, and how are they going to, you know, kind of, where are they going to go? So thank you, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Dr. Poole.
I think Dr. August is next, and then we'll...
Michael, coming up is Michael's iPad. Sorry, sir, I don't know your name. Go ahead.
It's Dr. August.
Yeah, Michael August, and then we're at 605 Holy Smoke Road, it's a little down Holy Smoke Road. So one thing I want to make aware of is, Holy Smoke Road has a difficult water problem. And I don't know how the project's going to affect water runoff into the road, but multiple times a year, the road has to get fixed. They've been put in culverts. Still, the drainage is a problem, particularly in front of my driveway at this point. So I don't know if you've done any studies involved with that, have you been aware of it?
Yes. Yep, well, there's definitely, you know, a key part of the project design is working on stormwater management. There are two state permits that are required. The first one is called the construction stormwater permit, and that is how is runoff going to be managed while the project is being constructed? And then the second one is called an operational phase stormwater permit, and that addresses, once the project is built, managing the runoff so as not to change the existing conditions in the surrounding area. So that's very much part of the work we've been doing and is still underway, because we have not filed those permit applications yet with, with the state of Vermont. So, you know, that's helpful to, you know, to get that perspective, but, you know, our requirements in terms of what we need to do to get those permits is to not impact surrounding properties from water runoff, and that's, you know, that's what we do every day. That's our, you know, we have, you know, 30 civil engineers that all they do is work on stormwater designs in Vermont, and, you know, we know how to make that successful, so that's, you know, that's what we will do.
I'm glad to see you're trying to get that access off of them, because that'll be helpful for our community too.
Yep. Yes, we, and just a note on that, I mean, that was something that, you know, through our initial discussion with David Cairn, I raised that idea, and we, you know, we've had some success with that elsewhere. We were able to, we were working on a project up north off of I-91 in the Northeast Kingdom, and, you know, they were willing to, the state agency of transportation was willing to give approval for a temporary access there for construction of a renewable energy project. So it's not totally unheard of. They don't like to do it because it's a limited access highway for a reason. You know, there's a lot of high-speed traffic, and people don't expect vehicles to be coming in and out. So it's, you know, it's something that we have to put together, presuming they're, they tell us, that V-Trans tells us that they're willing to, you know, allow this, we're going to have to have a very detailed traffic management plan, because their number-one concern is safety of the traveling public, and they don't want to have, you know, someone going down there at 55 miles an hour, or greater, as they do, and the truck coming out, you know, of a driveway that they weren't expecting. So it's very serious. I'm, you know, I'm optimistic that we'll get approval from transportation to do this, and obviously, we see that as a really beneficial outcome for the town, but, you know, there's a ways to go to get, to get to that outcome.
So also, I'm an avid bicycler, and going up Holy Smoke Road is one of my favorite things.
Yep.
That is a lot of people, because it's become a highly bicycled road. So, and one of the places I stop is right in front of Kennedy's. Because I have to go up Holy Smoke Road, you got to stop somewhere.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's an important area right around there. It's important for nature, as the other abutters have said. So I hope you can do that. I'm a little concerned about that one patch that it does about, the top houses up there that you showed.
Yep.
And then another question for me, just saying, I know the select boards, they don't have decision-making on this, but who does?
So, yep, the process here is that the Public Utility Commission is the reviewer of what's called the petition, the Section 248 petition, that we will be, plan to be filing later in the winter. And so they're the ones that will look at the overall public good of the project, they'll look at impacts to aesthetics and noise, et cetera, and either approve the project with conditions or not. So they, that's the primary decision-making body. They will take input from the select board and take input from Bennington County Regional Planning, and, you know, Agency of Natural Resources and others as they issue their decision. Other decision-makers here, there will be some state permits, as I mentioned, the stormwater permits, that's the Agency of Natural Resources that independently has to issue those, and so the project will need to obtain, you know, all this array of permits in order to be able to commence construction.
So we're not a butter, so we didn't get any information prior to this. Is there any way we can get more information?
Absolutely. We definitely, you know, will, you know, get, get your contact information and, you know, get you the 45-day packet, and, you know, obviously, be willing to sit down and meet with you, with our outreach folks, and, you know, kind of have this conversation and make sure that, you know, your questions are answered as well.
Okay, thank you.
Just to anybody on, on the call here, info, I-N-F-O, info@freepullingsolar.com will go directly to Marcia Hoz. That information's on the 45-day notice, but if you want to get started before then, let us know. And then we will be sure to get back to you. And you don't have to be in a butter, be somebody that we will sit down with, so we like hearing what's going on, we want to understand about what's going on with the road, Jeff said, by law, by statute, but also in the spirit of being a good neighborhood. You know, you're not going to see any more runoff on that road, but, you know, if there's a way we can help. We do have, we do have quite a lot of civil engineering expertise here. There's some things we can do to actually make things a little better.
Okay. Yes. Go ahead. I don't know, please, I don't know if he can hear you from back there.
Yeah, there was quite a bit of discussion about noise. Is light an issue? Do these things, is there any equipment on there that will be emitting light, blinking or whatever, like transformers and I guess this switching equipment you were talking about? Because the other nice thing about that area, it's really dark at night and you can see the stars.
No, we appreciate that. You know, typically with all of our, our projects, if there's any light, it is never left on at night. It is only used in case there's somebody coming on site and having to do work. And so, just for safety purposes, it would be shielded.
Sure.
And it'd be, it would be intermittent. And I believe that that would also be true with all of the, you know, substation equipment. And as T mentioned, I mentioned earlier, you know, we're, we're actually making sure there's, there's a nice tree, normal area there that's flat. And that's where we're putting all of our, you know, larger equipment, much which will be Green Mountain Power's equipment. But making sure that's buffered to the greatest extent possible. So, there's little to go in that. So...
Yeah. And that's directly across from my house.
[laughing]
So, I, I have, I have a lot of concern about that particular set of equipment.
Very, very fair. It's, it's quite, it's quite best thing in the world to have a, be away from light pollution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody on Zoom? Comments from anybody on Zoom? Anybody?
I just have a quick question. How long do you anticipate it'll take to construct this?
Oh, go ahead, Reed.
Yeah, I, I would expect, assuming, you know, we get authorization to get things going in the, in the winter season, we would try and do it over the course of one summer.
So, that would be, all right, you know, our expectation, the winter of '23, '24. So, the authorization, you know, coming something over a year from now and then doing it during the 2024 construction season is kind of what we're, we're thinking.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have a quick one. Again, since we're here. I did a rough calculation of the weight of the solar panels that you would be moving up there. And I come, I don't know, I'm assuming like 50 pounds for solar panel and support equipment. And I'm also estimating that you're going to need about 50,000, 50,000 panels. Is that in the ballpark?
I don't, I don't have the numbers.
Okay. Well, I'd be interested in seeing that.
We are going to, we are going to come to be, you know, and sit down, do a little chat.
Sure. Okay. Okay. Those are the kinds of details I'd like to get into. I'm an engineer, by the way.
Sure. And, and if you can't tell, I am not. And I don't, and I don't try to pretend to be. But we, we have some really good people to...
I should say I was an engineer.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess as far as the Select Board, our biggest concern is the road, the use of the road and that sort of stuff. If this spur does not happen, then I think we're going to have a joint comment from both the planning, or the planning board and the Select Board that Holy Smoke Road that they are going to use to get to the project would have to be brought up to state standards, which means dig down, put in 18 inches of gravel, fabric, gravel on top, and possibly even block topping it. Because I don't think that the gravel road would stand up to the tractor trailers that would be coming over it and that sort of stuff. That's only if the spur does not work.
Okay. But that's hopeful. And, you know, our expectation is that if we, none of the temporary access, we would be, the materials would be coming in off East Road and taking that short section of Holy Smoke Road after the underpass and, and to the Kennedy driveway and not that long section of Holy Smoke Road going to the north, which obviously has a, a beautiful tree canopy and is a, you know, very narrow, you know, country road. So, we're not at all anticipating that traffic, traffic on that section of Holy Smoke Road.
No, that's impossible.
Be impossible.
In fact, we would restrict that. We would have to restrict that. You just can't have trucks going up and down that hill.
Yep.
So, that's...
You have to get on your bicycle.
Maybe all, all the bicyclists.
And, you know, we, as I mentioned earlier, we were in active communication with the Agency of Transportation. I'm hoping that later this month, we'll have some, you know, weather report, if you will, from them. And I'll clearly, I'll communicate that to David once we've heard anything as to what their thinking is about authorizing this temporary access. So, that, you know, that's, that's absolutely our preferred way of, of building the project.
Okay. Anybody else? Comments?
My, my only concerns are, there's a lot of pros and cons with this project, but the cons are really concerning. Being too close to these residence homes, that's very concerning. I wouldn't want that next to my house. So, I can't blame you. The other thing that concerns me as well is just, of course, it kind of stuck in my head when you said a portion of the electricity would be used in Vermont or maybe perhaps Shasbury. So, a larger percentage of that is going to go somewhere else and it's not going to benefit us. So, they're going to use our property to benefit someone else. I'm not really in love with that idea. But I don't know a lot about solar. So, I just wanted to put that out there. I do feel for you guys.
[laughing]
Okay.
We'll have you over for a soft set.
Bottle or something.
If there's no other comments, is it okay to go on to the next part of the agenda? Okay.
Thank you so much for everybody coming out for those conversations. Thank you, Jeff and Reed.
Yeah, we'll probably have...
Thank you for your time.
We'll, we'll be able to use Call Hall for any meetings that you want to have or anything, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. This is very helpful.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Very good. And we look forward to meeting with folks in person.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for stopping in.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the proposed ordinance for closing of Dexter Trail. Adam, there was a motion made and seconded, and then the motion was tabled, okay? So, what I need right now is a motion to bring the, the motion off from the table back to the floor. It will be, because it's been made and seconded, we're open for a discussion at that time. And then we'll, after discussion, we'll do a vote on it, okay? So, entertain a motion to bring the tabled motion back to the floor.
So moved.
Martha?
Second.
Second by Joe. Okay. So, we're open for a discussion now because it has been motioned and seconded. Any comments from anybody else?
I haven't been able to speak with James Cruz and Brad Peacock, the original folks that brought up this proposed ordinance. But we have walked it now, or, and I did that, which was helpful to kind of lay out the land. But I, I still have concerns.
Okay. They, they were informed about the meeting?
Yes, I did know that.
They, they certainly are entitled to privacy. But I think that can be done with adequate and legal signage and that sort of stuff. My concern is that the rights of the landowner that did the improvement, in this case, it's the Browns, but whoever might buy it later on, I don't think that we, his right to get to an area that has been improved, telephone Paul, I guess even somebody lived there for a while, I don't think it's right, we don't, shouldn't be taking that right away. And that's what would happen if, if that was, trail was closed. And other people are indicated they like to use it for recreation, that type of thing. So...
Even so, they, the people that do own the properties need to be able to maintain them. In order to do so, they're going to need that road. So...
If there is a log landing for somebody else further on down, when they harvest their, their timber and that sort of stuff, they need a place for trucks to get in and, and load and all that sort of stuff. So... So, any further discussion? You're ready to take a vote if not?
And just to restate the motion, the motion was to close Dexter Trail to motorized traffic because it has to be in the affirmative. So...
Yes, the motion was in the affirmative. So, so I guess at this time, if no other discussion, all those in favor of closing the road, say aye. All those opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Nay?
I'm abstaining because I haven't heard from those folks.
Okay. So, we have a, we have a three, zero...
Zero, one.
Okay. Thank you.
Just put in a footnote about other ordinances that were, that were passed. The rewritten firearms ordinance for the village, the appeal period or the period to put in a petition opposed with expired last week. So, it becomes effective Thursday, along with the addition to the kennel ordinance or the animal control ordinance for the fees on the kennel. So, the 44-day petition period ended last week. So, they were going to affect, notifications will go out Thursday.
And I encourage everybody to go to the website and keep looking at the speed ordinance. We're getting calls every once in a while that people have concern. And there's really not much we can do until springtime anyway. So, we're going to kick the can down the road before we vote on this one, okay?
It's hard to judge speed with the mud on the road.
Yes. So, you said the animal control ordinance will come into place? And what was the second one?
The other one was the rewritten firearms ordinance for the village district.
Oh, got it. Yep. Okay.
Just a rewriting of the 1977 ordinance, which is quite outdated.
And, and those go into effect when?
This Thursday.
Okay.
Okay. I talked to Dave this morning and he didn't have a final number on the budget, but we're still...
Yeah. Yeah. I had a little bit of a surprise. We, we had a last minute, last day change in health coverage for one of the members from single to family, which...
Which is a big impact.
Yes.
I don't have the paperwork yet. So, that's the only real change I see coming up. So, the final budget will be just about what I said last time. Instead of four, whatever I said, 4.90, it might get close to 5%. But essentially, it's, it's the exact same. And I'll be ready for a vote at the next meeting. But I'm still waiting to hear on which way we're going with, with the healthcare change. Because any healthcare change is kind of a lot of money these days.
Oh, right. And that Bennington County Conservation District letter, is that going into the budget or is that going to be an appropriation?
That's going to be, they put that in as an appropriation.
Okay.
Because they've never been in the budget. They've been a $450 appropriation every year.
Sure. That's why I was, when I saw the number, it was quite a bit more.
Normally, when we get an increase like that, we ask them to come before the board, but they did a whole presentation before the board. So, the board, you know, we, this is something we've lacked for a few years as a policy on how to do this.
Right.
So, the only way we can really do this is just put it on the ballot with the other community appropriations and...
So, it will be in March for the electorate to vote on?
And I have to adjust for that too because after...
I was wondering because that affects the budget numbers by quite a bit from 450 to...
Yeah, by quite a bit, from 450 to nearly 400.
$3,740.
But that is a change from the original ask in a meeting I had with them where they had split the ask equally between Bennington and us. And I didn't see why, when Bennington has more people who use Perrin Lake and they have four times the population, we didn't why we were all paying the same amount. So, they adjusted things to kind of prograde them for everybody.
Okay.
I think David's done a really good job to hold it at 5%. Bennington's first, first proposal was...
It was huge.
8.3 or something like that. So...
I think we, I think it'll, it's come out well. So...
Right. Okay.
Okay. Very good. I think it's something we can easily take to the voters.
Yep.
Department of Public Works...
We have mud.
We have mud. Boys are spreading gravel like crazy.
Yeah. Every January, we do get a little period of it. This rain today and the apparently heavy rain tomorrow certainly isn't going to improve things. But anybody sitting around the table who remembers five or six years ago knows that we've made leaps and bounds. But we still have gravel roads and it's that time of year. So, the road crew did a lot of things today and they'll continue working on it. The best part about all the work that they put into the roads is we don't consume a, what I consider kind of a ridiculous amount of gravel, pouring it into mud now. You know, it goes around, they have to keep spreading it, but not near the quantity that we used to.
Right.
I can remember years where truckloads would disappear into a mud hole.
Oh, yeah.
I believe it.
Yep. So, things, things are better. Things will continue to improve. But that's the forecast for the DPW mud.
Well, we're not going to see freezing temperatures till I think next Thursday?
Yeah. Yeah. You know...
Like another week away before we even see 32.
Yeah. And of course, there's limits to what you can do because they have you, the truck, you put up the road, the worse you make the road. So, they're, they're doing a good job. They're doing what they can. And like I said, another heavy rain tomorrow is not going to help anything. But...
Right. Right.
Okay. Review of action items. I don't think there was, I don't think there was any thing in the positive that we talked about. I guess we just have to be aware that there may be some informational meetings that we should be hosting in the future for the SOHOD project.
Yeah. And that could simply be just allowing them to use the room so that the two parties can get together and, and talk if they need a place to talk.
Okay. Do you think that we should join with the planning board in making a statement about the road use or wait till they, wait till we understand whether or not the spur can be used?
I think within the 45-day period that a joint statement from the Select Board and the Planning Commission should be sent to the PUC.
Okay.
Just outlining our concerns about the use of the road.
Right.
Okay.
Well, the benefits of the project.
Uh, our next meeting is the 24th, Tuesday, the 24th. It's six.
Well over $100,000 in property taxes.
Would you like me to appear by Zoom and just...
Yeah, maybe just put it in. I know that a lot of this Planning Commission, at least several of them have talked to Jeff. So, they're up to date with kind of what was happening. But I think just giving a little message, the 24th at 6:00 PM.
We may benefit from. It sounds like bait, which they want to put the mess here so they can benefit over here.
Okay. Yep.
I don't like that idea. I really don't.
It's Green Mountain Power though, right? I mean, so that...
It's Green Mountain. I know these are conversations to, to have with them because the electrical grid and how electricity is shared from Niagara Falls down to wherever. Yeah. I mean, I don't know how it works. And then you have all this net metering stuff. These are questions that, you know, again, the continuing conversation with these guys. And as they get closer, they'll have some idea of what they're going to do with this power. Right now, they don't even have permission to build. So, you know, it's, you kind of have to have it and then you find out where you can put it. But again, this is stuff to sit down with the experts and discuss because it's certainly out of my area.
But the $100,000 possible revenue to Shasbury is...
That's my area.
That would be nice.
Not off of that lot of land.
No?
No.
It's forested.
How much do we get off of that?
It's a forested area.
Off farmland?
Yeah.
It's a hundred and eighty's. I don't know the figure, but I can let you know what it is now.
It probably is nowhere toward $3,000.
Yeah, not even, nowhere even near that. Yeah, not even, nowhere even near that.
Really? So agriculture may really knock it back.
And forested land doesn't get very much either.
If it's inland, we get even less.
That's right.
So.
I mean, what's our total budget this year is?
$2 million, I guess I should know that.
So this would, but this is, the point is, this would be a sizable chunk of.
A sizable chunk, yeah, of money that would.
Yeah, it's at least, you know, 4% of the budget is what you're looking at.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Okay.
4%?
Yeah, so it is 2,200, you know, it's going to be, you know, three, three and a half, three and three quarters to four.
Yeah.
You know, so it's a sizable amount of money. You look at $40,000 roughly, every $40,000 spent is a penny on the tax roll. So you're talking about two and a half cents on the tax roll if it's $100,000. It's not a small, it's not a small thing.
It's important throughout this process to remember, too, that we don't have any, you know, it's the Public Utilities Commission has the say.
Right. We just are interested parties, we can lodge.
And they might point directly to the town plan and say.
And the fact that we have had several solar, successful solar projects that have been created here in Shasbury that are a benefit, too.
And it wasn't by accident, we specifically tried to kind of not regulate solar any further than the state already has, basically, is the way.
Right, right.
And I think the way Tim Scoggins once said it is, it's important enough that people might have to look at it, you know? And I know that's not what in a butter wants to hear, but.
Didn't we pass it like four years ago that solar could be put anywhere? It didn't matter?
Well, we didn't, we didn't outline preferred solar sites.
In the village, it could be out in your front yard, it didn't matter?
Well, we didn't delineate preferred solar sites. And you can look to Bennington, who did delineate preferred solar sites and have been in litigation ever since, big litigation with the Malones. So it's tough, you know, but we just don't, don't want the public to think that the Select Board has any say because we don't, we don't want to give that impression.
Yeah. I told people today, because I got a number of phone calls about the 45-day letter, and I said, we got the same letter. And a number of people, over the course of a year, come in and talk about a project, and we never hear back from them, or they send us a diagram and that was it, we never heard of them. There was one supposed to be on sale again, and that's not happening.
Yeah, and the weight cemetery one, I think, is in hold at the moment, so.
Yeah, but when you get the 45-day letter, okay, now we're getting serious.
Which was great. It was lovely to see all these folks out, to have conversations.
Yeah.
Any other business then? Okay, very good. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Right, second by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.